She said, she said she's also.
She's not ready.
I thought she had.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchita Schools, Winchita School Committee on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, Saint Patrick's Day, the patron saint of Ireland. Just so people know, Erin Gobri, you may hear that, and that is Gaelic for Ireland forever. So we call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so is there anyone else doing audio or visual tonight other than the town? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on. Public comment. Anybody have a public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We don't really have a consent agenda tonight, so we can move on from that. Look at that, five articles done already. We might get out early tonight. All right, number six, new business, budget hearing, and we're gonna need a vote for this. And that is, Mr. King is going to do a presentation on the FY twenty-three budget.
Very good, thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to present a balanced budget for FY twenty-three.
Yay.
So a couple of, we'll just kinda go through, this should go in the same order that you have as your packets, just so you know, I tried to align the presentation in the same way. So, a few things, the budget priorities, many of these have stayed the same over the past couple of years and they, and they stand that way as a result of sort of the situation we're in, especially relative to COVID and, and they're kind of ongoing, if you will, priorities and things that we've addressed in the past and continue to do so. But sustainable model for long-term curriculum development, instruction improvement and leadership is always a top priority in our schools. The social, emotional and behavioral needs of our students, and I would say are, you know, the emotional needs of our faculty as well. Meeting the needs of students with the greatest challenges in staff training, the culture and climate and parent and community engagement. And then the two that we're really gonna focus on a lot this evening are supporting the elementary math and literacy initiatives in the district that are aligned with their improvement plans, as well as what I would call special education vertical alignment that is, is really a need in the district. So a few budget assumptions that I'd just like to outline upfront, that unrestricted, unrestricted local aid in Chapter Seventy are based on current information from the state, so those are apt to change over the, over the next couple of months until June or July when, when these are finalized, and we would of course adjust the budget accordingly, but traditionally it's nothing major. I think last year we, at this time, everything stayed the same. Federal and state grant offsets are assumed to be funded at the same level as FY twenty-two, so you'll see on the grants page that the assumption with the grants is, is using all of FY twenty-two's numbers to predict what FY twenty-three will look like. Special education tuitions decreased this year by about eighty-two thousand dollars to one point seven, one point seven-five million, down from one point eight-three-seven last year. You'll also see since, in the budget when we get there, last year, you know, we, we had conversations here that the sped tuitions really had increased for us, but what we're gonna see reflected this year is that what also came with that is increased circuit breaker funds that we'll now be able to apply going into this following year. So, you know, it all kinda comes through in a year, a year behind. The circuit breaker program is assumed to be funded with a seventy-five percent reimbursement rate, which is pretty standard. Health insurance rate increase, and you would've seen this in your indirect cost sheet, of seven point five percent, that was estimated. I want to be really clear that I know this came up in town meeting the other night, or, excuse me, with FinCom and, and the Board of Selectmen, that the town manager was able to actually negotiate that down to six point five percent. I did leave that in this, as he presented the other night, that was actually still a part of their budget, the seven point five. He announced that it was negotiated down to six point five. But I will discuss, as we go forward, that for us, it's gonna kinda come out in the wash in the way that we did the budget in allotting for additional faculty this year, so it should not impact us negatively or positively in a major way. Contractual obligations are met for all associations and contracts that we have outstanding, so that's assuming as well we're in negotiations with, I believe, every union for the most part at this point. So it's assuming a two point five percent increase, COLA increase across all the unions. We did do the best we could to improve, excuse me, enter all their step increases, take into account all their longevities, those types of things. So, as it stands today, the, as I said, is approximately a two point five percent COLA increase across all personnel. And then estimated funding from the trusts, our two big trusts that we have in addition to our grants, we have Murdoch, the Murdoch Trust at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's a very traditional number for us, and the Robinson Broadhurst Trust usually comes in at around a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety-five thousand. It's important to note that the Robinson Broadhurst is a, is a trust that we actually apply for each year. We actually tell them what we would like to spend their funds on, ask for a certain amount of money, and we wait to hear on that. Currently, we are awaiting to hear back. We put in a request this year for approximately a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Historically, we receive around a hundred ninety to a hundred ninety-five. So I'll jump right into the trust, that's on the next page. Specifically this year, a little, I'm showing this a little bit differently. I'm only showing the Robinson Broadhurst Trust, but you can see here, this has stayed the same over the past few years at this point. We ask Robinson Broadhurst, we've put in the request for a little over thirty-six thousand dollars for the dual enrollment program that takes place at Murdoch High School. We also have in the Murdoch Trust, excuse me, in the Robinson Broadhurst Trust, we have supplies only for Memorial School. The Murdoch Trust Fund does not go below a certain grade level, which is why we only see supplies here for Memorial, not see that in, in any of the other schools, so Robinson Broadhurst usually supports that. I just wanted to make a point here at this, at this juncture, that we have been successful this year and we're ahead of schedule in moving all of the supplies budget into the general budget this year. We've talked about that here at School Committee a few times, that we've been carrying the supplies budget for all of our schools in our two trust funds. And it, it makes it a little bit nervous if those things happen to dry up, you know, as, as a very simple explanation, we're not buying paper next year. So, I'm really happy tonight to be able to, to say that we are way ahead of schedule based on, on the budget this year, that we've been able to move all of those supplies back into the general budget. The exception being Memorial, we would've been able to do it, however, we've already put in for this request through Robinson Broadhurst and it was not a time where we could go back and say, oops, we changed our minds. So, we'll wait to see what they fund us for, it does give us some flexibility if they, they fund us less than what we requested at the hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then, so there's some educational software in there as well for Memorial. District-wide, this is where we have traditionally funded our one-to-one Chromebook program, and we continue to do so. And then special education, the extended school year and educational software is also in here for this year. So we'll, we'll wait to receive those funds and see what we receive. We always would bring that to the School Committee. That is a separate vote, I just want to be clear that that's not really a part of the general budget, but we always discuss it at this time of the year. By mass general law, we do have to vote on those funds as they come in, as a check comes in that we vote to receive those, so that would be a separate vote, but we do discuss it this evening.
Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Before you turn the page, could you just take a second? Cause some of these things, I'm sure people watching at home don't know what these are. Maybe some people up here don't know what they are, maybe, so I thought, might be, just if you took a second, like dual enrollment.
Absolutely.
You know, the one, you mentioned one-to-one Chromebooks and extended year.
Sure, I'm happy to be in.
Just real, real briefly.
Yes, starting at the top, dual enrollment at Murdoch High School, we started a dual enrollment program, I believe, two, two years ago now. Dual enrollment is a program where high school seniors in Winchita are able to receive both college credit and their high school credit simultaneously. We do that in a partnership with Worcester State University, where they actually send their professors to Murdoch High School campus and the classes are taught right on campus. So at the end of that, at the end of the year, our, our high school seniors, I believe for the past two years and we're in our third year, have graduated with, with all of their credits to graduate high school, but they've also been able to walk out with eighteen college credits as they go off to college, which are able to be transferable to any state college. We teach the real fundamental classes that we know would carry them into college, English, math, those types of classes. It's been a very successful program and we've grown it each year actually in terms of the numbers of students that we, we've been able to serve, so it's something that Robinson Broadhurst is very proud of and it's, it's really, I think, along the lines of, of what these trusts are for, which is trying to enrich our students' lives. And so we're, we're very happy with that program. District-wide, I mentioned the, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, so for those who don't know, we are a district where every student is, has at their disposal a, a Chromebook. So we call that a one-to-one, there's one Chromebook or one device for every student across the district. And we fund that through, again, Robinson Broadhurst. For, for a small district like us, that's a really nice program to have. Not all districts have that and, and it was really nice through COVID. It really allowed us to transition very quickly and have our students be able to continue their, their education without any disruption due to technology in terms of that, so a very nice program that we have. We have special education, very specifically extended school year, you'll sometimes see that referred to as E S Y. You'll also see it in the general budget. E S Y is a special education program for our substantially separate classrooms, specifically our all program, where we continue to provide services for those students over the course of the summer. We've, we have always put a little bit extra money here in Robinson Broadhurst in case it's not fully covered by the general budget. We anticipate it being covered by the, by the general budget, you'll see that line item if you were to go through the budget. There's a line item for, I believe, it's thirty-two and a half thousand dollars. That was based off of last year with a bit of an increase and real numbers in terms of what we paid out to our teachers to run that program, our teachers and paraprofessionals. So this is kind of a just-in-case that goes over. Traditionally, we've been pretty good. And then we have some software that we use specifically for special education that we also fund through Robinson Broadhurst. What I would like to say is, moving forward, we would like to do some of the same things that we've just done with Murdoch Trust with Robinson Broadhurst, which is to move some of these types of items out of the general, excuse me, out of the trust and into the general budget. Had we known the increase in the budget, had we been, known what that was before we were able to apply for Robinson Broadhurst this year, we probably could've done it this year, which is, which is a personal objective of mine, so that we can use these funds for really kind of enrichment types of activities like, like the dual enrollment. The Chromebooks is a great place, but although that's something we would probably also like to move into our general budget, so we don't ever lose it. With, with having said that, traditionally, we sit here tonight and I show you what we're spending Murdoch Trust money on, and it's traditionally a bunch of supplies. This year I did not provide that slide because we've moved everything out of, that we traditionally pay for with Murdoch Trust into our general budget, and we've done some PD work, we've done supplies and so on. Murdoch Trust operates differently from Robinson Broadhurst, they do not request from us any type of application in terms of what we will spend the money on, they just send us a check and we're allowed to spend the money freely. I'm really happy to say that this year we've moved everything out of that, and what we will be doing as, as a group is to plan enrichment activities for our students in, in Winchita that we would not otherwise have. So, you know, they've funded a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars each year for the past number of years. You know, we don't know what that number's gonna be yet, but when we do, we'll plan those, those enrichment activities accordingly. And I think that's, in my opinion, that's what the money is intended for and, and I'm very happy to be able to, to bring that forward in a much quicker fashion than, than I had anticipated.
Greg.
Mr. Chair. Maybe you won't be able to do it until the end of the year, but at some point, or can you give, give us an idea of when you might be able to, to let us know the breakdown in the distribution of the, the Murdoch funds, what those funds are being spent on?
Absolutely, like I said, Mr. Vine, this, this is a bit unanticipated this year, so that, we, we would normally do it here, but I'm more than happy to bring that forward and so that we can show everyone, you know, how we're gonna spend that money and, and it's a hundred percent, you know, in my mind right now, towards students and enriching activities, whether that's camps or whatever that might be, you know, those are the types of things we would envision spending that money.
So, I mean, is that something that you'll have planned within the next couple of months? Or will it have to wait until the end of the fiscal year before you have?
To be honest, I'd like to wait to see what they fund us at this year, you know, I, I think the economy's been a little different this year, so I'd like to see how they're gonna fund us, but, you know, we would, you know, certainly make those plans as soon as we get those funds. We will probably get together and start talking about what we, you know, wish lists, and then when we get the funds, we'll kind of plan accordingly, but we'll bring that forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, if I can, just the last thing I'd say is that, you know, you look at this, that's nearly close to four hundred thousand dollars, the two funds are giving us on a fairly regular basis, and I don't know that we and, and other, at least in terms of the Broadhurst Fund, other beneficiaries of that fund thank these folks as enthusiastically or as often perhaps as we should, and I just, I didn't wanna let that go by without saying how much we appreciate the money that we get and the help that they get and frankly their interest in the education of the kids in this town.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Mr. King. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry Karen, you're so far away.
I know.
I'm so close to you. All right, go ahead.
I'm just a quick question, that you, when you mentioned the E S Y, I just wanted to clarify as a special ed advocate, you did say that the E S Y was the all-room students. I just wanna clarify for people that E S Y is determined by an I E P for any student. So I just wanna make that clarification, just so we don't put any students in a box.
No, I'm saying that primarily that's what, what, what we run is primarily, we run our all programs all summer and fund a big of that, a big part of that through E S Y. There are other special education students who are also funded through that for the summer, absolutely, you're absolutely correct.
I just, I just wanna make sure we're on, I know, I know you know. I just wanna make sure anybody out in the public doesn't get upset thinking that only.
No, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions on that page, or we good? All right, seeing none.
I would like to make a motion that we thank Robinson Broadhurst and the Murdoch Trust somehow.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, kind of a.
I, at some point, we can do it later, but I'm saying that.
Can we do it at the end?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, don't forget.
I won't forget.
All right, we'll do it at the end, all right, Mike?
That's fine, it's in.
All right, thanks. Okay, let's move on to the next page.
So as I mentioned at the opening, and some of the objectives of the, this year's budget was to support specifically our elementary schools and their initiatives, specifically around literacy and math instruction, and then additionally aligning special education. So with that, we also need an additional custodian, we've been short a custodian at the high school. Really, as it led into COVID, we had a retirement and, and that was never filled, and so you'll also see up here, the seventh, the seventh position is a custodial position designated for the Murdoch High School Middle School. We have four teacher retirements that we, we believe we have four teacher retirements this year. Traditionally, what we do is basically budget for those to replace them with what we would call a salary of an M five, which is a, a person with a master's at step five. So we just kinda use that as a number to budget with, you know, versus someone at the top, at the top step of the, of the scale. It comes out to roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollar savings, at which point then we have seven additional folks. So I just wanna, wanna sort of articulate the Toy Town, we have T T E for Toy Town, we have Memorial, both of those, we've added one classroom teacher each. You'll see a little bit later that we have a, you know, a discussion of class sizes and numbers of sections. It's just, I just wanna note right here that those are as they stand today, it does not include these particular numbers, so that when we think about that, that's where we stand and the addition would help offset those, those numbers. Those teachers would be at the principal's discretion as to how they would use those, where they would place them, maybe a bubble class, whatever that happens to be, interventionists. So we have very large literacy and math initiatives in both of those schools. The fundamental belief that I have and that I think we share across our leadership team is that the success of this district really is built on the foundation of what we do at our elementary schools. So we really wanna do a nice job of supporting those initiatives. We also have an additional music and art teacher at the elementary schools. I did not specify a building. Right now, we share some allied, what we call allied arts teachers or specialists, music, gym, and so on. We have gym teachers at each of the buildings, we do not, we share music and art teachers. So the addition of these two teachers is really again back to supporting that literacy initiative, where this will help allow better scheduling in both of those schools, which will allow for what we call common planning time. So really, best practice in education these days is to use your data to sort of drive instruction back into your classrooms for intervention models, but you need time to sit as a team and look at that data. You know, a big part of that is having the faculty to allow that time. So the addition of music and art teachers for those two buildings and I, you know, however those get split is, is up to the principals who's gonna go where in terms of the music and art teachers, will allow them to schedule a little bit differently so that they can have a common planning time to look at data and plan more appropriately to drive that instruction back into the classroom in our intervention models. In terms of special education, we've, we've talked in here recently about, a little bit about central office and needing to build some things up in terms of functionality. I've, I've put the title up here Assistant Special Education Director, just for the lack of a better term. Currently, what we use are coordinators at the, at the kind of secondary and elementary levels. So what that means is, we currently take a, one of our special education teachers in the buildings and pay them a stipend, at which point they get an extra period of day off so that they can work on I E Ps, hold meetings, those types of things across generally two buildings. So that would either be, you know, the middle and high school or the two elementary schools. What that usually leads to is also, you know, days where we need to get possibly a substitute to cover for those meetings, those types of things, you can envision that we have basically just, we'll, we'll set aside a day to hold those meetings. And this means that that teacher, who was also a classroom teacher, is no longer in their classroom servicing their students. So it really does disrupt learning, learning to a degree. The other piece that really is of interest there is making sure that our I E Ps are aligned vertically and that they sort of follow students in a meaningful way according to sort of what we're doing in our district. And right now, just to be frank, it's a little disjointed. It, it's no one's fault, it's just sort of as a result of, of, you know, the condition that, that we've gotten ourselves into over time and reductions of staff. This was an opportunity to basically keep those coordinators that are currently classroom teachers in the classroom in front of students, you know, where they best serve our students, and let someone else run those meetings, you know, manage the I E Ps and so on, and that we can be looking at those I E Ps K to twelve. Along the same lines, we would like to assign a special education, I'm calling it academic testing specialist. So there's a lot of testing that goes on within special education. And so what we would like to do is again, set aside an individual who would do that testing for the district as opposed to once again pulling teachers out of classroom time quite possibly, and again, not being able to provide direct service to our students. So it's, this is sort of twofold. One, to keep our special educators that we do have, to keep them in front of our students as much as possible, and then secondly, it's to sort of align what we're doing vertically K to twelve across the district. So that, that's sort of the thinking there behind, behind the special education staff additions. So all told, that's an addition of seven full-time employees at really what I would call a net cost of an additional three hundred and thirty-four and a half thousand dollars when considering the retirements.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead Karen.
Sorry. So that, just to clarify a couple of things, for M H S and would that bring the custodian count to three?
Four.
Four, okay, so we'd finally be more up to date with what we need at the, at that level?
Correct.
Okay, good.
That's what it was prior to, to, I, I believe FY twenty.
Right.
Was four.
I know that's been something that's been brought up here, so that's great.
Correct.
Now, as far as the title for your Assistant Special Ed, so what you're looking for basically is a team chair. So in other districts, what they call them is the, is the Evaluation Team Facilitator or Team Chair. Just speaking from experience, having gone all over and done team meetings.
Same concept, that's the concept we have in our minds, yes.
Right, and you're looking, now, that person would be in the district all the time as a full-time employee?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and as for the Academic Testing Specialist, would, are you looking for somebody that would be a certified teacher?
I believe we would probably use a certified teacher ideally, someone that has experience delivering, you know, the, the battery of tests, if you will, that we do in special education.
Like the Woodcock Johnson and the Wisk and all of those? Okay.
Correct.
All right, just, I wanted to clarify that they wouldn't be a consultant then?
No, these would be full-time employees within the district.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead Mike.
So, I'm very pleased to see that we are restoring music and art to the lower schools. I know it's been a long time since we've had the opportunity or the funding to do that. As, as I look across what you're, you're proposing this evening, I'm, I'm very happy to say that we are moving in a good positive direction fiscally, thank you very much, and that, you know, the, these positions that you are creating will have a lasting effect for our children, especially at the lower levels where they can get the most services. Obviously, music and art, we want to encourage our children to flourish with the, with the, with music and art because obviously that ties into all, all the other programs we have. Whether we understand that or not, that is how it does work, you know? And so I'm really glad and to bring in, to help rebuild the special education department is, is critical in moving forward. As you know, we, we do have a lot of special education needs in this community and to have our own testing person on site, I think, is very valuable long-term for the community because we can get the kids tested right away and find out what, what services they need instead of scheduling and waiting for a consultant to come in, so thank you very much. I think this is a very solid plan as far as hiring some more employees, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
So the, the really important part of this as well, by the way, is I think that, that I wanna reference here and I'll come back to it when we hit the budget more specifically. Seven folks is a lot of folks. I wanna be really clear that in planning this, the idea is that this is a sustainable model. We're not looking to bring on people because we've got a, a really nice influx of money this year and you're gonna see shortly that we have an unheard-of ten percent increase in our budget this year, year over year. So sort of the balance of that is not running into it and saying, I'm gonna buy, I'm going to hire a lot of people and then a year to two years from now, we have to reduce those because we can't sustain it. So I just wanna be really clear that going into this, the thought process was, we will only want to bring in what we can sustain going forward, even considering, you know, I think we all have shared concerns that we don't know where we're gonna be in three years or so when, when COVID funds dry up and, and what does that mean for the overall budgets going forward? It seems a mystery, to be a mystery for all of us. And so we did plan it in such a way that this is sustainable and we wouldn't envision having to reduce these numbers if, if we were flat funded one year, so, and I'll go into that a little bit later, but I just wanted to point that out now.
Okay, well done. All right, next slide.
So this is just the enrollment estimates, these are based on really current estimates today, what we have in our classrooms, say in kindergarten first and so on, so it's moving those numbers forward by a year. And again, as referenced just moments ago, the numbers that you see up there as sections, if you will, in FY twenty-two, those are current staffing numbers. So it does not include the additional teachers that we just specified to add at both Memorial and Toy Town. And again, just to be clear, those things don't include things such as our, our allied art teachers, our music and so on. These are our sort of homeroom teachers, if you will. So we have five sections of kindergarten through second grade and we have four sections of grades three through five. To be honest, six, seven, and eight are a little bit different in the way they operate. They're kinda teamed up, but all in all, that's the total number of teachers there across six, seven, and eight. So the projected class sizes are, are based on those current numbers. And we always have bubbles that move through. I actually, these are not reflective of what you have in your packets. I, I, I'm sure some of you are looking at this going, this is not what he gave me. I up, I got numbers that came in today. These are literally as of March. So we have, we have to provide updated counts to DESI in March and it just so happened those came across my desk today, so I just decided to include those here and update those numbers. So first grade through twelfth grade are accurate numbers. Kindergarten is an estimate, just based on what we think might come in. Obviously last year we had a hundred and thirteen kindergarteners that, that we have in our classrooms today that will be first graders next year. So we're just kinda using an estimate of a hundred coming in. Our total enrollment based off those numbers is, is twelve hundred and one. If you're doing the math, it's not gonna add to that. This does not include pre-K. There's an additional approximately seventy-five students in pre-K, which would bring that number to twelve hundred and one, just in case you got your calculators going. So that's where we stand today. So we'll be able to use those teachers, you know, to offset, provide smaller classrooms or provide a scenario where we can have common planning time, interventions, and so on at the elementary levels.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead Ryan.
I just wanna recognize what the superintendent pointed out just a moment ago. And that we are seeing a budget proposal that is most certainly for most districts way outside of the norm. To add seven positions in a small district like this in one year is absolutely fantastic. And to do it in a way that is sustainable is almost surprising and very exciting. What is great about our school district, of course, is that it is small. So it is good to be adding positions in instruction, positions in special education, positions in the arts. In the case of the teaching positions, I do hope that the class sizes that we're seeing on the screen here will be strongly considered when placing those positions, of course. We know that some of the most effective classroom teachers can be even more effective with, with smaller groups of students. But to be in this position, as we're coming out of federal funds, is absolutely fantastic and, and good, good for us.
Thank you.
Thank you Ryan. Anybody else? Nope, next page.
These are grant estimates. The way that we present the grant estimates, as you'll see here, are, these are actual numbers for FY twenty-two. We just use that as a basis for what we would get next year. Traditionally, as an example, both, our, our largest grants, I'm gonna ask you to ignore S R two and three for just a second, as difficult as that might be because they're really big numbers. But if you look, if you kinda go down their numeric, we have the two forty grant, which is our special education grant. That's one of our, generally our, one of our larger grants. This year it's five hundred and eleven thousand. I believe last year it was just a touch under five hundred thousand, if memory serves. Our other primary grant that drives a lot of what we do in the district is the Title I grant, which is listed up there as fund code three zero five. That's this year at three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Last year it was a little bit, a little bit lower. Just as, as a point of conversation, this is the grant that most people talk about possibly being impacted by COVID funds. We hear a lot about Title I funds possibly getting depleted a bit after, after COVID, after the COVID grants. We had actually heard that that was gonna happen to us last year and instead we actually saw an increase. So those are our largest grants. You know, the, the special education grant, the two forty, is primarily used, I think this year I've, have in the, in the budget, the line item budget, approximately three hundred thousand dollars to fund out-of-district tuitions. Some other things that are in there are staffing, consulting services, those types of things that we do for special education. And then in Title I, we have traditionally a lot of professional development in there. We also have some faculty in there. And I do believe in the budget this year, I, I tried to provide, when you look at that in the line items, I provided different columns this year for each of the grants where traditionally we've kinda just had an other column and dumped all the grant types of things in there. So I did try to break it out this year as to where we have people in the grants that you should see in, in your packets, in the line item budgets. As of note, going forward, you know, we, we carry a, a number of personnel. A lot of times our interventionists. We have some support for our kindergarten program with paraprofessionals in that Title I grant. Any, any person who's in that grant that, that is under MTRS, the State Teacher Retirement System, that's a bit of a loss of money for us because that, that three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is, it automatically calculates, if you put X number of professional staff who are in MTRS, we of course take their real salaries and plug those in when we apply for the grant. It automatically calculates their Massachusetts State Teacher Retirement Fund. And it takes that away from us, if you will, because it directly funds that. So you're going forward, one of the things that we would like to do, and we, we haven't done it yet, but we will, we will be thinking about this going forward, to, to really be more efficient in how we use those grants is to not fund as many people, the professional staff, because we lose, in a manner of speaking, the state teacher retirement funds that go with that, right? Those are getting paid straight to the state. So we're better served by maybe keeping some of those people in the general budget and not losing the state teacher retirement fund out of the grant. So it's just a piece that we're kinda considering. We don't really do that as much with the two forty grant because we have such out-of-district placements, that we use a lot of that money to go straight toward, to, straight toward those tuitions. But these are our traditional grants that we have. We do have the two large grants, S R two and three. Which have, that we just received approval maybe a month ago for the S R three, which is the larger grant, almost two and a half million dollars. We will come in with a different presentation on how we plan on spending that money, that, how we applied for that money. So that we can be transparent in what that looks like. S R two, we applied for quite a while back. About fifty percent of that money was originally when we applied for the grant specifically for special ed transportation as we were very concerned during COVID about the increased rates in transportation. Where we saw almost an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in transportation costs due to the limited, limited number of students that were allowed on buses. Coupled with the extra students who were going out of district that we have to transport. So right now, a lot of that was earmarked. We've, we've closed out a number of other S R grants, or I'm just gonna say COVID grants because some weren't called S R. We had an S R one, we had a different type of COVID grant. Those were closed out. They were primarily used for supplies in the past. And then the other big piece, I believe that was S R one, was to fund the sort of retrofit of, of Toy Town and the HVAC there that was coupled with the earmark of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the governor's budget, which actually, Mr. Barbaro was instrumental in getting when he was a selectman to get that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for his earmarked to, to improve Toy Town. So we've been very fortunate and what we've been able to do in this small district, as Dr. Forsyth pointed out. I, I have down there below the Special Education Program Improvement Grant. It was a small grant, twelve thousand dollars that we have this year. Again, since the way that we present this is present what we have this year again as a prediction. We do, we know that's not something that will be available to us next year, so that's shown in red as a deduction. So our estimated grant awards for next year are a little over four and a half million dollars. So it's important to note that traditionally, you know, we're more like half of that or less due to the COVID grants. So that's, that's what our grant situation is in terms of the district as it stands today. I'll take any questions.
Questions? Okay, hearing none, let's do the next slide.
This is the page everybody wants to see really. I saved it for last. I wanted you to anticipate. So just, just as a point of reference as to how this is broken out, what you see on the screen is really the top half of this page in your packet. It's the revenue section. And then the next screen will be the expenses section. So when I say that, you know, we've had a big improvement in our, in our budget this year, regardless of how you look at it, whether you're looking at the chapter seventy-eight from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, and the chapter seventy-eight is, is our, is our money that we get from the state to run the schools. Whereas the local aid is the local contribution from the community that's, that's required. Those two things combined are effectively what we call net school spending. That is the, the base number that we use to run the school district off of. So you'll look, if you look at FY twenty-two, the chapter seventy line going over to FY twenty-three, that's a pretty big improvement. It's roughly a million dollars. It's an eight percent year-over-year increase. Traditionally, that number, if you look, you can just look at the numbers up there. FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two was essentially a zero percent increase if you look at it from eleven-five to eleven-five. The year before FY twenty to FY twenty-one went from eleven-four to eleven-five, so, you know, short money. So I just really wanna emphasize what an anomaly this particular year is and how important it is to make sure that what we're doing i- is sustainable based on those traditional numbers. And which is how we sort of got into, you know, how we will consider sustaining going forward. But if you kinda come on down, we've got, I'm just gonna put it out there. You know, over the years past, we've got, gotten from fifty thousand to sixty-three thousand dollars through the solar revenue. This year that was zero funded by the town. And the other piece is our override that, that's been in place, increased a little bit to three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
On the solar pilot revenue? Mr. Barbaro, since your days on the, as a selectman.
Yep.
What's your recollection on the distribution of the solar funds? When we first agreed, when the town first agreed to, to do the so- solar?
Solar funds, solar funds were originally estimated to be split fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Through projections. So.
And.
If, 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 and I don't know what the, I know the town manager was talking about his budget being very lean. The revenue share this year would have been about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And is the, is there anything that obligates the, the town to give us that money or is that just the gentleman's agreement?
That was a gentleman's agreement based upon the needs of the community. And with the town budget being as lean, my understanding is the town budget being as lean as it is this year. We got more of an increase, obviously, an eight percent increase in chapter seventy and the unanticipated local aid bump from the community really put the town in a, in a bind as far as being able to share their money. He had to shave roughly three hundred thousand dollars out of his budget to make the numbers work. So we're more fortunate this year, which is usually the opposite. And, you know, that, he needed that money this year, obviously, to plug the town budget without, without losing services. Which, given the, given the current circumstances that the superintendent just laid out, I think we can survive a year.
Okay, no, I, I think we can. And it's been great, but I just wanted to, I guess there's been some confusion about whether it was etched in stone that it was fifty-fifty or if it was just a gentleman's agreement or so I just wanted to clarify, yes, we're gonna be fine. I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to understand it.
Mr. Chair, the hope was that, that money would be able to help sustain education going forward with the split. But, you know, given the fact that the town is, is receiving less money overall than the school district, it makes it harder for the town manager to balance the budget.
Okay.
Moving forward, I know he is committed to try to fund the solar money appropriately.
All right, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Karen?
Just because we're on that subject, can we make sure, and I don't know how we go about doing this, but when we do go to our town meeting or whatever, that this is brought up somehow, that if we're foregoing this, this year, that we are doing it again as a gentleman's agreement? That this has been done in the past? And that we're not saying that we're, because we don't want this to become a habit. If the, if the education, if that was the agreement. We don't wanna say that, okay, this year we're doing great. We may need that money in the future. I just don't wanna make a decision now. I, because the, one of the primary concerns of the school committee is to look forward.
Right.
So.
And I hear what you're saying Karen, that's why I brought it up.
Right. And, and I'm glad you did.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna see us, I don't wanna see us come to a point where, where they just say, well, the schools, they didn't have any last year or the last couple of years and they survived, so we don't need to give them anything. I mean, I think, you know, as long as, and that's a negotiation between the town manager and the superintendent. They should be able to work together and, because I certainly don't want the town to be shorthanded. I mean, our citizens, and it eventually affects our, our students as well. If the town can't fund their programs either, we don't want that for sure. But I think you're absolutely correct though Karen, we don't wanna be forgotten.
Right.
Cause there was a lot of talk about the money was gonna go to schools and the kids and all that stuff. And we all said, yay, yay, let's, let's, you know, get solar stuff.
That's.
I've got two big farms right next to my, on either side of the road or my, my house, so it would be nice.
Yes.
At, at the same time, I understand that, you know, we're in difficult times.
And I understand that. That's why I wanted to, you guys had the conversation, but I just wanted to clarify that we make sure that going forward, we direct the superintendent to make sure that we, we put it on the town manager that, yes, we, we have no problem, you know, being amenable, but
Yeah.
we do need to advocate for the schools.
Yes.
You know, because as much as we are part of the town and, and obviously, you know, the students are, are, are first, the students and our staff are our first priority here and we need to, that's our job as school committee members.
Yep, yep.
Advocate for our students and staff first and foremost.
I'm happy to speak with the town manager and see if we could maybe memorialize something in writing going forward.
Just put something, you know.
I think that would be good to have some kind of, some type of agreement on how we can have a voice in, in the solar money.
Right.
Tonight I don't have anything ready, but at some point in time, I think we should try and get something on paper so that we can have something that we can live by and feel good, good about, both on the town side and the school side.
I'll pursue that.
All right, so I just interrupted your flow of thought.
That's okay. That's okay. So, you know, in addition, we do have the pri, the override money, which was a three hundred and sixty-five thousand. About, you know, nine, ten thousand this year. It's offset by our indirect costs, a little under three million this year. And you'll see that that's actually a, a cost that has come down. In your packets, it is actually on the next page in your packets if you'd like to see the breakdowns for that. But it really brings us to sort of our, our, our net operating budget, if you will. Fifteen million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. But again, I'll, I'll direct you to looking at what that is compared to FY twenty-two and, and, and prior to that. From FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, that is a ten percent increase year-to-year in our, in our bottom-line budget. That's a phenomenal number. If I just go back and look at that, what that looks like historically, because, you know, looking at chapter seventy is interesting, but really what's our bottom-line budget look like year-to-year? You know, from twenty, from FY twenty to FY twenty-one, and you can see it just looking at the numbers on the screen, looking at that net total local and state funding number. FY twenty to FY twenty-one, for all intents and purposes, was a zero percent increase. FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, approximately a three percent increase. And now this year we have a ten percent. And the reason I'm pointing all that out is if you were to go back and look at prior years, we're usually hovering somewhere more closely in that realm of one to three percent when we get to this line item. So when I, when I talk about sustainability is looking at adding that, that, those folks and saying, can we sustain that with a three percent increase, if you will, going forward? And so, so that's how, and when, when we get to the expense, excuse me, when we come on down to the, yeah, the expenses and the salaries, I'll, I'll go over the same thing relative to what our annual sort of year-to-year increases are there as well. So the way we've planned this is that we should be able to sustain those seven folks. And if not, I got a backup plan, so we'll hit that as well. So let me kinda get on down through the rest of this. Sped tuition's revolving. I, I don't know why that, that line got discontinued. It looks like it, we should probably remove that out of here. It's really, it's, it's really the same thing as circuit breaker. And so I want you to, I'll point you to the, to the end there. This year is a really large number for us, which is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our circuit breaker. But that's really reflective of last year's numbers with students is how we kind of get, that's the money we're actually receiving this fiscal year.
Could you just take a second and explain what circuit breaker money is?
I will. That, that's the money that basically we receive to offset the, the excessive, you know, the excess amounts that we spend in special education. And so I know it's a very simplistic. And so, I know it's a very simplistic explanation, but we receive money to help us offset what we, how we send students out of district um, and the transportation and the services that those students provide. So, we receive, uh, money back. So, what, what'll happen at the end of this year, we will submit paperwork, uh, to the Department of Education um, with all of our special education numbers in that relative to those types of things. Uh, they run it through a calculation. It's, it's roughly seventy-five percent that we then receive back. So, that, that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the money that we're receiving quarterly this year. And the way circuit breaker works is, um, you can roll that over. It's considered revolving because we can carry it for two years. But you cannot carry it for more than that. So, what we received last year must be spent this year, otherwise we lose it. So, the money we're receiving now must be spent next year, otherwise we lose it. It's a place that we've had difficulties in the district in the past. So, we've tried to do a really good job of paying attention to our circuit break at number, circuit breaker number. So, you can see on the screen, uh, that this year, we're actually spending two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and we spend those directly on tuitions. Our increased costs last year, because we did, as a result of COVID, we had more students that were out of district. They were dysregulated, those types of things, which is really to be expected. We were certainly not alone in that. It was, it was typical. But with that came increased, not just the increase in tuitions, but also increase in, uh, transportations. And especially when you consider how transportation sort of went last year with, you know, fewer students on buses and so on and so forth. So, we got a bigger return, uh, you know, this year coming in that we'll spend next year against tuition. So, what you see in the, in the line item budget, um, we're actually spending less money out of the general budget because we have, you know, whatever, a hundred, you know, almost two hundred thousand dollar increase um, that we'll be using against those tuitions next year. So.
Mr. Barrow.
Mr. King, I, I just want people to understand that circuit breaker is, you have to hit, are we still at the thirty-five thousand dollar? We have to pay out before they will qualify for circuit breaker.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm not an expert in circuit breaker.
Okay. Well, it used to be, and it was, thirty-five thousand. The, the district would have to put out thirty-five thousand dollars of our own money before we could even qualify for circuit breaker. And then it was, and the number is luckily stuck at seventy-five. We've been down to lows as sixties, high sixties in the two thousand and ten when the economy collapsed. That number, um, is very volatile. And the legislature has done a really nice job of trying to keep that at seventy-five percent. But understand that we put out thirty-five before we even start. So, that's just how it goes. And that number's fixed for out, out, you know, whatever we spend on a special ed student, we have to get up to that thirty-five thousand before we can even qualify for reimbursement. And there are children that don't reach that, that we, we provide services for. I think that's another.
Absolutely.
You know, five oh four plans and so on. So, I think that's important that the, the community understands it, how, how circuit breaker works.
The, the other component of this is, uh, special education budget is, is, as Mr. Barrow pointed out, you know, one of the most difficult things to manage in, in a depart- in a, in a school district. In that you don't know who moves in, who moves out. We don't know, you know, a student who is currently not a special education student, who receives their assessments and so on. We don't know if that means a student would need to be placed out of district. We don't know if we get students who move in district but are out of district students already placed, so on and so forth. So, uh, circuit breaker really often serves to help us offset those surprise, uh, expenses that we, that we struggled to budget for. You know, you can have, you know, one or two families move in with, with high-needs students and it can really, um, hit your budget hard. And circuit breaker is a way that we can sort of, um, ease that and not hurt our, you know, still meet and balance a budget at the end of the year. So, uh, you know, we're trying to spend that money the way that we should spend that money. We don't spend any of the, um, if we, you know, for the last number of years, we have not spent any of the revenues that we receive in the existing FY year. If we had to, we would. So, as an example, if someone moved in, if a student, um, you know, tested into some particular program that, that we couldn't support here in district and we needed to send him out, we can, we are able to tap into that money. But we don't, if we don't have to, so that we can carry it into the following year. So, I just wanted to explain that, you know, it is usable, but we generally try not to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so, so that's a big number this year. Uh, the next thing we have is school choice, and I want to be really clear. Uh, there are some sharp people out there watching, I'm sure. Uh, we are going to spend, and you'll see it in the line item budget, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of our school choice funds. If anybody looks at cherry sheets, and if you're not familiar with cherry sheets, cherry sheets are, are what the state provides uh, to tell you, you know, basically, uh, income and outgoing, if you will, expenses, um, charged to a town in the districts. This number is larger than our, than what you will see in, uh, what we're receiving next year in school choice funds. So, we receive funds, um, for students who attend our school district that do not live in Winchendon. Those are called school choice students. At the same time, we spend money, if you will, on students who live in Winchendon and go to other districts. Um, you'll see that as well in the indirect cost sheet. You'll see the expense, um, the outgoing money, if you will, the school choice assessment on the indirect cost summary sheet on your next page in the packet. That's a little over eight hundred and, it's almost eight, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. But that's included in the town's indirect costs, so we don't pay that out of our general budget. However, we receive the receipts, and that's what we have here. This number is, where I'm going with that is this number is higher than the money that we are going to receive next year. School choice is a revolving account, so we are able to accumulate those funds. I will have a slide later in the presentation to show you, um, how much money we have in our school choice account. But it's what gives us the ability to spend more than we're receiving. We currently have approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in that account. And that gives us the opportunity to put, you know, an extra person or two. So, this, what we are trying to do here is spend what we receive currently while maintaining, uh, a balance in that school choice account. Uh, and I will show you that here in a few minutes, uh, and in the, in the next couple of slides. But if anybody is looking and I see that, uh, Ms. Cass might have seen the cherry sheet, it is more than, than what we are receiving this year. We did the same thing last year, by the way. Uh, athletic revolving, uh, again, we have, uh, we have really three revolving accounts. Uh, we have, uh, we have school choice, we have athletic revolving. And we kind of consider circuit breaker revolving just because it carries one year to the next and general budget does not. The athletic revolving, um, and again, I'll show a slide that shows you the balances of all these. But next year, uh, we have in the budget to, uh, hold about forty-six thousand dollars, a little over forty-six thousand dollars will be charged against, um, our athletic revolving account. Essentially, that covers, um, our athletic director stipend. Um, it covers our secretary, uh, the, the athletic director secretary stipend. And, uh, supplies, athletic supplies, um, are not, you'll notice those are not in the general budget, if you will. They're over in the athletic revolving. And I think we pay our EMT police. We've talked about that in here, actually, over the course of this year. The EMT police got moved into the athletic revolving. Um, however, they're, you know, and all of those things have an actual line in the general budget. We just don't fund it with our general budget. We have those out of the, out of the athletic revolving. Um, in a traditional year, and again, you'll see this in a minute, um, that number is probably a sustainable number going forward when we're charging fees and we're getting a gate. Um, I, I would say that that's, that, that forty-six thousand dollar number i- is relatively equivalent to what we would expect from what I'll just call receipts, whether that's through stu- uh, student fees or, or gate receipts, um, to football games, basketball games, et cetera. But I will hit the athletic revolving here in a minute, just a little bit more deeply. Yes, sir.
Um, sorry. Has there been an, I, um, with the additional, some additional revenues, has there been any thought to, um, lowering student user fees for athletics?
We've discussed that here a couple of times, and, and I'm gonna ask for, um, a little grace on that till we get to the athletic revolving, because what I want to actually discuss there as well is what the athletic department costs. Um, so that we can talk about that a- against the same thing, if you don't mind?
Not a problem.
Okay. Chair, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
The other two, we've already discussed Robinson, Broadhurst and Murdoch Trust. Um, but that gives us our, our, you know, total other funding sources, um, that we have. We have, uh, are, bringing us to a total of non-grant revenue of sixteen million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, uh, dollars. You add in the grant revenue that we just looked at that page of a little over four and a half million. It brings us to a total estimated revenue of, of twenty-one million. And again, I'll just point out that you'll notice it's a huge increase year to year from what we've had in the past. But a big chunk of that down there, that bottom line, is the COVID money. That COVID grant, um, really, you know, puts that number pretty high. So, I just want to point that out, that that's not, that's not something that we would normally have, and it's, it's tied up in, in grant money. Any other questions, um, on this page before we move to expenses?
Anybody? No?
Great.
Okay. Let's do it.
So, this is the bottom half of that page. These are our expenses. There you'll see the FY twenty-three, the projected salaries. That does include the seven, uh, additional, um, folks. It also includes estimated, uh, COLA increases, step increases, longevities. It's the whole kit and caboodle. That, uh, comes to a little over twelve million, um, where you'll see the years prior was a little bit of, uh, about eleven million. So, as I mentioned earlier, if we kind of look from FY twenty to FY twenty-three at the salaries, you know, what we try to do is keep salaries, in terms of your budget, salaries roughly around eighty percent or less of your total budget, twenty percent, um, to the other expenses. This year, um, and in prior years, just to kind of keep us in line here, is our, our budget this year, that's about a seventy-seven percent of our budget is taken up by, uh, salaries. That holds true at least last year as well. It came in at under eighty percent. The year-to-year increase from twenty-two to twenty-three is a nine percent increase in, uh, salaries. Um, historically, FY twenty to twenty-one is really a tough year. That was, that was a tough year. That's actually only a point oh six percent increase in salaries. Twenty-one to twenty-two, um, was a one and a half percent. If I were to go back and look at it traditionally, we ranged anywhere from, uh, one and a half to two and a half percent increase. Sounds a little odd because our COLAs are generally higher than that. Um, however, you have to think about the retirements, um, that are outgoing that sort of offset the increases oftentimes in, in our, uh, COLAs. So, we generally come out to a, a touch under three percent in, uh, increase in salaries year to year. And so, when you balance that against our sort of, um, bottom line, uh, income, those two numbers are, are, we're usually a little bit, uh, higher increase in our, um, local funding against our, um, our salaries, salary increase, which are two big things to track. So, going forward, we've planned it as such that those additional seven won't hurt us if we increase by, say, three percent, two percent next year in our net spending. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan.
So, the projected salaries includes COLA and steps, obviously.
To the best of our ability right now, yes.
So, you're two percent, two and a half percent in COLA, whatever you're, whatever you're using as the average for the steps. What about, we're bargaining a lot of agreements right now. What about new collective bargaining agreements? Uh, I mean, our costs?
I, I've projected in here for, uh, approximately two and a half percent increase across everyone, uh, i- in the district. So, w- we have, uh, enough in here that, you know, we'll be able to sustain our current negotiations.
Yep. Great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Move on.
As an example of that, Dr. Forsyth, you would see that when we, we talked about adding folks, uh, at the, um, Masters Step Five, uh, that number is actually reflective of our FY, uh, FY twenty-two's Masters Step Five plus two and a half percent. So, just to give you an idea, that's, you know, we tried to track it in that manner. That leaves the other projected expenses at a little, uh, three and a half million, um, bringing us to, uh, to balance against, uh, the net total and, uh, local and state funding above at fifteen million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If you go down below the expenses in the revolving accounts, um, the four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, six fifty-nine, that's a combination of, um, the four hundred and twenty-five in circuit breaker and the forty, what is it? I think forty-six thousand in, um, the athletics. So, that's, that's the combination of those two pieces there. Uh, the gifts and trusts are the Robinson, Broadhurst and Murdoch Trust. And then the other salaries and expenses, that three hundred and sixty thousand, uh, should match and does. It's just rounded up, up above in the, uh, school choice salaries that we're paying out. So, that's just to balance out those, those pieces. That brings, uh, to sixteen million, seven twenty-nine, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in total expenses. And again, you'll see that up, up above. That's, uh, the same number that you'll see in total revenues, non-grants, um, near the bottom of revenues. Grant salaries, and again, you'll see these outlined in, uh, in separate columns, if you will, in your spreadsheet, your line item budget. Um, grant salaries come in i- at around seven hundred and two and a half thousand dollars, so seven oh two, five fifty-six. So, that would include salaries that are things in, we do have some ESER salaries that we currently have. COVID nurses is an example that we continue, we plan to maintain. We have an adjustment counselor, I believe, in, in those salaries that we contin- we plan to maintain in the next year. This also includes those folks that are in Title One, um, any, so any grant-funded salary comes to, to roughly seven hundred and two thousand dollars. And again, you'll see those listed in the line item budget, how they're broken out. Uh, grant expenses and programs, uh, three million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, the grant expenses, I should say, excuse me, bringing us to a total expense of the twenty-one million, two ninety-seven, three ninety-nine, uh, balanced against the total estimated revenue, uh, bringing us to a balanced budget. Questions on the expenses?
Anybody?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Next slide.
I just wanted to sort of, uh, this is just that summary page that shows the, the funding against the expenses. Uh, it's, it's a balanced budget there, the twenty-one, um, almost point three million. And I mentioned that we would get to the athletic, the revolving accounts, and here we are. We started this kind of slide last year. I'm sorry that it's not in your, uh, it is not in your packet. I did not have it prepared. I, I see Dr. Forsyth looking at that screen. Uh, it's not in there, but, uh, I can provide you this. So, these are as of this evening. Uh, our school choice, our balance as of the beginning of this fiscal year, so as of July first, twenty-one, uh, the balance in school choice was eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I will mention if anybody saved, uh, last year's riveting packet for the budget, that that number is higher than what we estimated there, the last column. And the reason for that is, um, we had talked in here about having excess funds at the end of last year. So, what we were able to do is move, uh, a number of those salaries that we had, uh, charged against school choice over the course of the year. We had excess money left last year, and so we moved a lot of that money out and back into the general budget so as to increase our revolving account, uh, in circuit, excuse me, in school choice. I mentioned this was Plan B for sustaining that budget. So, as you can see, the plan is to, you know, if we continue to basically spend what we receive, which would really, the model for that is to support the students that we're receiving. So, we receive three hundred and, you know, sixty thousand dollars. If we spend that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we are supporting the students we receive through school choice with school choice funds. The interesting piece to school choice for us is, you know, we don't have, a lot of our classrooms are at or excess capacity. So, you know, oftentimes you might want to spend school choice because it puts your, your, uh, number of students in excess of what you can carry quite possibly. What we do in here at the end of this year is our principals will come forward and say, hey, I've got low enrollment in these grades and we can accept more school choice students. We can often do that without increasing our faculty because of some of our class sizes are smaller, which could be an indicate, you know, going forward, we could say, maybe we're gonna underspend. But that, that would be the reason. But generally, we want to spend what we receive. Right now, we have that eight hundred and six thousand dollars to start the year. Our receipts for twenty-two were three thirty-eight. We're spending three fifty-nine this year. That gives us a net deficit of a little over twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, so at the end of this, or I should say, the starting balance going into FY twenty-three should be a little over seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, when you think back to that year-to-year increase in salaries, um, if we're ever in trouble, um, if, if the, the, the state and local funding doesn't support us, we have as well yet another backup plan. If it's not as sustainable as I think it is, and I do believe that it is, we do have the ability to move a few folks in here and still not deplete, um, you know, that school choice account. Athletic, uh, the balance at the beginning of this year was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, almost a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, it's important to point out that this particular year, uh, the school committee, I believe, voted to, uh, reduce some, some costs as well as, uh, we offset by boosters. Um, our boosters actually had Murdoch Trust money that they wanted to really spend. And what they did was helped out our students in the fall, um, fall and winter sports. Spring sports, we are, uh, charging a hundred percent user fees. But in the, in the fall and winter, um, students were offset by our boosters, which was very generous of them to spend their Murdoch Trust money. I'm really estimating our receipts total this year at twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's low, um, you know, in a typical year. We usually ha- bring in approximately, when I go back and, and look, forty-five to sixty, excuse me, sixty thousand dollars between fees and, um, you know, gate receipts, if you will. The total athletic budget, as an aside, is two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, um, is what our total athletic budget is. So, you know, we're bringing in about forty-five, fifty- So, you know, we're bringing in about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars in, in fees and, and gate to offset a total budget of around, this year it's two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The expenditures in FY twenty-two, we have about forty-five thousand dollars in there this year as well, which is going to deplete us by about eighteen thousand dollars, bringing us to approximately a hundred and seventeen, a balance of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars as we start next year. But we would anticipate receiving fees and gates should be back to somewhat normal next year, where this, this could be level, if you will. So I'll open that conversation back up to, to Mr. Barrow about the fees.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Barrow.
Thank you, Mr. Sam, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's all right. I, I understand why the gate fees would be down this year. Obviously with, with COVID, you know, most people didn't want, want to venture out. I'm just looking, you know, the, the sustainability of, obviously, athletics in general. We want to encourage as many children as we can, and I know, I do know we give, we call scholarships to kids that can't afford to play. But overall, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a long-term look to reduce fees to a more manageable level at some sports. Like hockey is very expensive. Football can be very expensive, you know, to try to, to try to create more of a balance, to encourage more children to play. Obviously, that's, you know, the better, bigger teams we have, the better off they are. I mean, I've watched kids play both sides of football for many years, and it's, it's very challenging. So I'd like to see if there's a, a plan long-term to look at that, to try to reduce some of those fees.
I'd be happy to bring a presentation one night about what our current fee structure is. I don't have it off the top of my head, you know, committed to memory. But what I can tell you is, we do have a fee structure that takes into account a family with multiple athletes. We have a fee structure that takes into account, you know, a maximum. So if you're a student that, a student athlete that participates in multiple sports, there is a maximum that you would spend over the course of the year and so on. So we do take that into account to a degree, but I'd be more than happy to bring forward something that outlines what that looks like and if we, if we should consider it against other, other local districts. The other piece to that is, we do provide scholarships and, and whatnot as well to help any student who needs it. So, we're very sensitive to that, and I will say that we're very, we have a very nice boosters organization who does receive money from Murdoch and so on as well that does often help out.
Thank you. It's just something I know.
And just so you know, Mr. Barrow, and everybody else knows that no student that wants to play is denied because they don't have the fee.
Absolutely not.
They, any, any student that wants to play any of our extracurricular activities and sports that collect fees, if they don't, if they don't have the money, then they're allowed to play anyway. We find ways.
Yeah, we do.
We find ways. So, I don't want anyone to feel that they can't play. They can. We want them to play, and Mr. Barrow's point is very well. We'd like to see all students have some kind of participation and some activity in, in our schools. It's a great growth opportunity for them, not only, you know, they get their academics during the day, but there are a lot of great growth opportunities in our extracurricular activities. And if you go to those, you can see it. It just puts a smile on your face when you, when you see band members, when you see people on stage, when you see people on the football field or hockey rink or, you know, any of the fields that we have, field hockey and soccer and all those things that we have. We offer quite a bit for a small town.
We do.
We offer a lot of activities. And, and so, we certainly want to encourage our kids to participate. So nobody, no parent out there should worry that they can't come up with the fee so their kid can't play. And that covers everything, uniforms, equipment, whatever the kids need to participate. It's going to be first-class.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
Sorry. I think we need to make a point of maybe letting people know that a little more because I do think that we have had a problem getting participants for some of our sports because, and I don't know, honestly, I really don't know how many parents may be holding back because they think of the fees and don't know that there is the possibility that they could get help with those fees. So I do think maybe we could add something to the website or, just because I think that there has to be a way to let people know that. I've, I've been very thrilled to have Ronan, Ronan has been, Silas now, Ronan has been very happy to be part of, you know, he was on soccer and, and he's now in the band and, you know, he loves it. And, you know, I can't imagine, he's had such a fulfilling time doing that. And I would, I would love to see more of our students be able to, you know, do that. I know Ms. Santos' kids on, you know, on the softball team, you know, I mean, we have all these great sports here.
Yep.
So I think if we can do more to let parents know that, you know, if you can't afford it for some reason, we will find a way to make it work.
Right.
Thank you.
I agree, and, and I think doing the presentation that Mr. King talked about is a good way to kick that off.
Yeah.
So people can see the structure and decide, you know, that they can, they can play, whether they can pay a little bit or they can play the whole, they can pay the whole nut, or maybe they can't pay anything. But the student can still play.
Is it the same as what Jenna gave us when she did the presentation when we were having the discussion?
It hasn't changed, so it would be the same.
I can send that to you, Mike. I have it.
Okay, thank you.
I keep everything.
But I, I think the presentation is worth, worth it doing again.
No, I know, but just so he has a basis.
It's worth doing again.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Absolutely.
Yep.
The last revolving account here, loosely I would say, is the Circuit Breaker account. Again, we covered this, but the balance going into this year was two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred fifty-seven. And that's the money we'll be spending this year. So that was the money we received last year. We'll be spending that against tuitions this year. We're receiving this year, so I will acknowledge that, you know, in the, in the, in the budget, I showed four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The exact number, as, as discovered tonight, is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, is what we received this year. Our expenditures this year will be, will match that of the initial balance, the two sixty-four, eight fifty-seven. So we should see a surplus deficit of zero. So we don't ever really want to see there a surplus, because if it does, we're probably giving money back. If we see a deficit, it probably means that somebody, something happened over the course of the year. Somebody moved in, a student tested in, needs, you know, some extraordinary services, and we had to dip into this year's receipts. But this year it's a zero, so we should expect to see a balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-two as we kick off FY twenty-three.
All right, any, any questions?
Just one quick one.
Ryan?
Mr. Superintendent, I'm trying to get used to this revolving account, and I'm trying to compare it to the indirect cost calculation sheet where there's a school choice assessment about two-thirds of the way down of eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Where, I'm sorry, where are you?
Indirect cost calculation sheet.
Got it.
And there's a school choice assessment of eight four four five nine nine, about two-thirds of the way down. How does this, that compare to the revol, yeah?
Yeah, that's act, so it's broken out. The, the indirect cost is the assessment. So the town covers that in their indirect costs. So that's the outgoing, our, our kids who live in Winchton who go to other towns. That's, excuse me, that's what we pay out. However, the receiving tuitions come straight to the district. It's just the way that it's calculated. So, as opposed to kind of doing a net effect, if you will, it doesn't work that way.
Oh, okay.
So, does that explain it?
Good question, Dr. Forsyth. That was a good question.
Yeah, so if you were to look at the, at the, at these quote-unquote cherry sheets, which you have to go online in the Mass D R, there's a page for revenues and there's a page for expenditures. And so in this particular instance, the town carries the expenditures on that, the assessments for that, as well as the charter school. That comes straight, that's billed to the town and not the district, so they account for that in their indirect cost. But the tuitions come straight, they come straight from DESI right into, to our accounts.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
I'm just to help with that. Mask, Tracy Novak is the expert on this and does an amazing workshop on it and explains this in detail. So if you really want to learn about this, about the cherry sheets especially, it's, it's not fun.
Good money tech.
But it is something to, um,
No.
to absolutely, if you want to learn more. And the charter school stuff is another, I, I can give you a whole crash course in that if you want, so.
You know what, I shouldn't be so confident.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
I'm not going to be so confident.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
All right, hearing none. Let's move on. Next slide.
And lastly, I just wanted to provide a few key takeaways that we, that we discovered, that we discussed here tonight. We added seven faculty members to our department. We focused on supporting elementary literacy and math initiatives. We also focused on special education, sort of vertical alignment and keeping our special educators in front of our students. You know, we focus on the fact that it's going to be sustainable going forward. And a couple of pieces, maybe that weren't addressed directly in this part of the presentation, although we did the first one here. We moved our supply lines out of the Murdoch Trusts ahead of schedule and put those into our general budget, which is something that, that was really important to me, and I think it should be important to this district in terms of, you know, making sure that we can continue to run our schools. The other piece that I have referenced repeatedly here and actually was a part of my interview for this role was the objective to use some ESER funds to indirectly sort of fund, if you will, our facilities projects. And so what we had discussed was, or what I had suggested I wanted to do with our ESER funds was to move items into ESER that ESER would be willing to pay for, that we normally had in our general budget, and then instead, take that same money and keep it in our general budget for facilities. So what you'll see when you go through the budget line by line is that we do not have any PD or professional development accounts funded. They're all zero, and those would have been zeros as, compared, compared to the prior years. The only exception to that is a central office PD where probably we could not apply some of those things to ESER. So what we've done is moved all of that into, into our ESER. And what we've done in kind of a holding place is to have a line item. I believe it is the very final line item on the budget of a hundred thousand dollars for special facilities projects. So what would happen is at the end of ESER, when we are run out of funds, that special facilities projects lines will go away and we'll see professional development come back into the general budget. But between now and the end of that time, we'll be maintaining a list of kind of special projects. We'll be prioritizing those over, you know, varying different things. Are absolute necessities? Are they wish lists? You know, what do those happen to be? And we'll be chipping away at those as we move forward using that money. It also provides us a little cushion in case something happens. We have, we have that, that fund there as well. But I really would like to see that used for, you know, many different items. There's an example, we don't have lockers at the high school or middle school. So there's an example that we would like to see. We have an issue with stair treads. It's an ongoing issue with stair treads at Murdoch. I don't, I don't fully understand the adhesives and all of those things and how that works at Murdoch. But I, what I do know is the stair treads don't stick, and it's very expensive to have that replaced. So there's a number of things that are really important to our buildings that we've, we've just not had the money in the past to take care of. And I think that this is the opportunity to sort of take care of those things and take care of what we have. You know, I, I think the nicer things we have, the more inclined we are to take care of them. And so, you know, that's the objective going forward.
Is the, is the elevator at Toy Town on anybody's wish list?
Great question. The Toy Town.
Either capital or in your ESER funds?
Go ahead.
It is, it is on the capital plan.
Okay.
For this year, to be replaced.
It's on the capital plan. It's been approved. I, you could correct me. I believe it's been approved in the past but not funded. I did have a conversation with the town manager about that. We also put it in ESER so that if we needed to, we can fund it. It's something that, that ESER would absolutely cover. So it will be covered one way or the other that we'll have that elevator. The other big-ticket item is, you know, we talked in here about a year ago, and it's finally getting done now, where we, we captured some funds at the end of the last year to do a short-term fix on the HVAC system in the auditorium at the high school. It's only good for a couple of years probably. It was around thirty thousand dollars. A whole fix is a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars. But since that has to do with air circulation and air improvement and air quality and all those good things, we could put that into ESER as well. So we're, we're looking to start, it's a little bit of a longer project, but we will be doing the short-term fix so we can use that thing in a meaningful way, especially in the summer and whatnot. And then I would anticipate a two-to-three-year outlook in terms of actually getting the, the real long-term full fix on the HVAC at the, at Murdoch High School to make it a, a more usable space in the long term.
Is that something we can apply to MSBA for? As much as we may not want to, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a maybe. I, I, you know, I honestly can't speak to that directly, but it's, it's a possible. I know that right now ESER is very specific in, in saying that it covers costs for air quality, if you will, or, you know, air exchanges. And, and so it seems like a softball, if you will, in terms of applying it there, but.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like a perfect.
So, at any rate.
Nice fart.
Kind of gives you an idea of, of some of the things that we're, that we're looking to do. I wanted to point out one more piece in, in the budget that you might have seen in the last three lines. We accounted for those seven folks at the end. Their, their indirect costs are not carried in the indirect cost sheet. So I mentioned earlier that the town manager was able to negotiate down the healthcare increase from seven point five to six point five. My calculations say that that's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar savings to our bottom-line budget. However, you'll note that I have about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to account for the additional folks that were not in their indirect calculations. So it's really going to be a rough wash. Even though we're going to get a savings, that part's going to move back into his budget. So, maybe thirty thousand dollar difference.
All right.
Okay? And with that, I'll take any other questions.
Mr. Chair?
And, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Looking at the, the increase, do you think that it's taken into account the new ed reform law is finally catching up with small communities because it has not been in the past? And I'm wondering if that's something they're starting to catch up to with more funding, quote unquote. I have to say that like that.
I understand.
Being funded in the educa, in the educational line items. But I'm wondering if you think that has something to do with the, obviously dramatic increase this year? And going forward, you, I would say it can be more, I'm not going to say eight percent, but I would, I'd be happy with three.
Yeah, yeah. I, I wish I had a better answer for you than I do. I, I don't know if it has anything to do with that. There's been a lot of speculation, to be honest. If you recall, when we started COVID, there was a lot of talk about how student enrollment numbers were going to impact our budgets going forward because there was a lot of concern that students, and students did do this, that they, you know, were going to opt out and do remote types of settings, you know, greenfield and so on, and that it was going to negatively impact us going forward. DESI has continually said that we will not, that we'll be sort of held harmless for that, and they weren't going to let that impact our budgets for a while. And I'll say that, at least for now, it hasn't. I will say that our foundation enrollment, which is not the number of students who are actually attending here, but it's the number of students who live in Winchton, has increased. And so I would say at the very least that that's been a positive influence on our budget this year, but I don't think it accounts for the total, you know, million dollars of chapter seventy. But I would say our foundation enrollment, I believe, increased by approximately twenty students in, in town, which, and, and the other piece is the actual enrolled students has stayed flat instead of decreasing. It's actually gone up since the beginning of COVID, believe it or not. I think the year prior to COVID, we were just short of twelve hundred, eleven seventy-something, and now we're twelve, as, as of tonight, it was twelve oh-one, so.
Thank you.
You know, I think we're holding our own right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions for superintendent? Okay. All right, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. I think the next thing then, if there's no questions, that we go to a suggested motion. And then we can open it up for more discussion if we feel we need more discussion. Someone want to make the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Greg, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we vote to approve and recommend the twenty-one million, two hundred and ninety.
It's right on the front page.
Oh, that's right, okay. Here we go. Move that the school committee vote to approve the FY twenty-three budget as presented by the superintendent. That's a lot less wordy than what I was going to say. That's the motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have more discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Forsyth.
I want to thank the administration for presenting a prudent, balanced, sustainable budget with time for school committee members to review it. Thank you for doing so. I also want to recognize there's some significant improvements that have been made with this budget. Some of those things the superintendent talked about, such as the use of federal funds for one-time expenses, a perfect use of federal funds that will not necessarily come back to our district. And also an appropriate allocation of things like salary lines within the budget so that they can be accounted for properly. So improvements to the budget in addition to the, the benefit that we have of additional funding this year. I do want to say that I am generally supportive of this budget. However, tonight I will be abst- abstaining from the vote on the FY '23 budget. Because the budget process in our district traditionally includes a single vote on the entire budget, and I have a family member that is employed by the district, there is the, there could be the appearance of impropriety. I suspect that the budget will pass without my vote. I don't think it's necessary. It sounds like it's, it's been well-received by the board. However, if an additional vote is necessary, I will request from the chair a vote of necessity to allow me to vote in, in support of the budget. In future years, I do hope that the board and the administration will support a multi-line, multi-vote budget process that will allow us to vote on individual lines and not address any type of potential impropriety, or I should say perceived impropriety. But tonight, I will be abstaining.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just real briefly, I, I too would like to thank the superintendent for the budget he's put together and for being prudent in the use of the ESER funds. I get a chance to see, as a correspondent for a local paper, what other school districts are doing, and many of them are using the ESER funds for staff with the caveat that, you know, from administrators that, "I'm pretty sure we'll be able to find that money when the funds are gone." Well, you can't be pretty sure about those things. And so I'd like to thank you for being careful, not just with the money, but basically with the health of the school district and being careful with the future of the students in the district. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. So, there's a motion on the floor. Move that the school committee vote to approve the FY '23 budget as presented by the superintendent. Karen?
Aye.
Aye. Ryan?
Abstain.
Mike?
I will abstain.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the budget is accepted and passed as presented by the superintendent.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, number seven, old business.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I had asked that a subcommittee representative's topic be added to the agenda for the purpose of considering alternates to be applied to subcommittees in the current, current fiscal year and in future years. In your packet provided by the administration is the existing Subcommittee for School Committee rules, which does include a clause that says that the committee chairperson, subject to the approval of the committee, will appoint committee chairpersons and members. I am hoping that the board would consider a motion to approve all, excuse me, approve subcommittee alternates for all subcommittees to include all other members of the board in the case that extenuating circumstances require a substitution. That would mean, as one example, for the policy committee, where Karen and I currently are the members of that subcommittee, that yourself, Mr. Chair, Greg, and Mike would all be added as alternates to be called upon if necessary, and of course, repeat that for all, all subcommittees.
So, is that your motion?
Happy to make a motion if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, and then we can put it into discussion.
I do move that the school committee vote to approve the subcommittee alternates as proposed by the chair, and I propose that the chair consider assigning each member of the school committee to each policy, excuse me, to each subcommittee as an alternate.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. So, basically, it would be really easy to make those appointments, because all of us would be on every committee. There would be the people that we already have voted to put on the committees. This would just simply make sure that if, if for some unforeseen reason that someone could not serve, it would be next person up to help fill that position until the person could come back from whatever caused them not to be able to serve. So, I, we'll open it up for discussion if we have any. All right, hearing none. Let's go to a vote. Mike?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye unanimously, then we will all be added as alternates for those that were not the primary representatives on. Okay?
Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. Great.
It was easy.
All right, number eight, future, oh, by the way, before we just leave that, I just want to say, so in the, in the event that you can't serve, for whatever reason, we've all got stuff, if you can't serve and you can't make meetings, then whoever is the chair of that committee, please let them know, or you can let me know that you can't, then I will go, you know, I'll try and juggle the list a little bit, but I'll, you know, for example, your committee that you just mentioned, if you can't make it, Karen calls me and says, you know, Ryan can't make it for whatever reason, then I can call Greg or Mike and ask them if they're available to fill in, or I'll fill in myself. Okay? So good communication is what will make this work. So if any of us cannot fulfill our responsibilities, then please, you could also call THAAD too. So between calling the chair of your committee, calling me as the chair of the school committee, or calling THAAD, between all those, we should be able to get somebody to, to fill in. Okay, Mike?
Mr. Chair, I just want to be upfront that I have a, my spouse works for the school department as a teacher, so I will,
Right.
will not take place in any negotiations,
Yeah.
nor will I sit in on any executive session.
Absolutely, and that's a good point. That's a very good point, Mike. There are some committees that you can't be put on because there would be a conflict of interest.
Absolutely.
So thank you for reminding us of that. So we'll be careful. I'll work with Mr. King, and we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, great. We're future agenda items. People have something that they want us to put on for future meetings? Yes, go ahead, Karen.
I think we need to add the things that were mentioned tonight, that THAAD was going to bring the breakdown for the Murdoch trust funds. And it doesn't have to be for the next meeting, obviously. These are just.
Yeah, it says future, so.
Right. I just made some notes. And there was also.
The fees, athletic fees, right?
The athletic fees. And there was also, I was wondering if we could do the same thing as with the Murdoch trust with the SR funds that you were talking about, just to be totally transparent.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything you want to add?
I think you covered the, the one I was interested in,
Okay.
is the fees, and I,
Yep.
so I can get a better handle on where we are.
Great. Greg?
Yeah, I was hoping it would have been carried over from the last meeting. I wasn't able to attend, but I'd like to put the school committee meeting frequency
Oh, yeah.
back on the agenda.
We should put that on the next one. Frequency.
Or schedule, whatever you want.
Okay. Dr. Forsythe, you got anything?
No.
No?
No.
No? Okay. All right, so we've got some things, Mr. King, that we can put on the next ones. All right, school committee closing comments. Let's see, I'll start to my left this tonight. Mike, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to thank the superintendent and the staff for putting together a full and comprehensive budget proposal that restores positions in this district. I think it's important moving forward that we are able to increase our staff in services, especially in music and art for our children. I think that's a very good step in the right direction. It's important that we give our children as much as possible. Also, will help us retain students moving forward. So that's very, very important. And I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work over the last two years, whether it's staff, the superintendent, the nurses, parents. You've had to put up with a lot of stuff over the last two years. It's been very difficult for a lot of people, and, you know, we're on the other side now, finally, I hope. But I'd like to thank everybody because it, it's because of everybody in this community pulling together that we can get away from the masks and get away from all the testing and all the other programs that we had to put in play, and that we can actually see our children and have them communicate. I think it makes it easier for children to learn when they can see. But our concern now moving forward is how do we make sure that our kids learn social skills? That, that is the question going forward, because isolation has made it very difficult for some children. And I, I wish to see that, that continue. Thank you.
Mr. Vine?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay. Dr. Forsythe?
Just a thank you to the school principals, the superintendent, the staff in the administrative office for putting together a great budget that's going to benefit our district. Thank you.
And Ms. Cass McBride?
I would like to say ditto to everything that everybody already said, and I would like to, I know I'm the Debbie Downer, but I would like to remind everybody that COVID is still out there. Not to be downer, but I just lost my cousin who's five years older than me to COVID. So as much as people want to say that it's gone, it is not. And I just want people to still be careful. As much as I'm glad not to wear masks, I'm glad that our kids are not wearing masks, but we are still losing people, and I think we need to still recognize that and still be careful and still respect that there are people that are still going to wear masks and still need to. So please do still take care of yourselves. And I do want to really thank you guys for a great budget presentation, and I'm so glad we have a business manager now. No offense to that. And thank you to all our principals and the staff for putting in a tremendous amount of work to get this all together. And thank you to all the teachers who are doing this daily with our students. And thank you to all my school committee members for asking great questions.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I wasn't here when you voted on a new business manager, and some people may not have seen that as well. So part of my closing comments is to welcome, officially welcome from the chair, Robert Mullins, as our new business manager. We are thrilled to have you. I'm sure Mr. King is dancing in the street, knowing that he's got somebody that can help take some of the burden off him, so he can do some other things, like be the educational leader instead of the business manager. So welcome to Wichita Public Schools, and, you know, I met you the other day, and I just appreciate the fact that we have an experienced person in that position. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Mullins?
All I would like to say is thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. I appreciate the support, and Happy St. Patrick's Day to you.
Yeah. He knows where his bread is buttered. Yeah, so, yeah, and I do want to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day, even though it's coming to an end. Some of you may be celebrating later, but it's, I want to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day. When I was brought up, it was a big thing in my family, being Murphy. By the way, little trivia question, the most populous surname in Ireland is Murphy. And when I went to Ireland, Murphy, ice cream places, barrooms, everything was Murphy over there, and I didn't realize how popular it was. And I think I, my grandfather came over here, probably because he was kicked out, but that's okay. He came over here. And on this day, we were brought up that everybody on March 17th is Irish. So Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. And now I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
I think we've got a couple of motions. We'll just take one of them. And Karen, you've seconded all those.
Seconded all of them.
Let's go right down the line. Karen?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Mike? Aye. And the chair votes aye, and we are adjourned at, that's wrong. Is that, is that?
7:46.
7:46, so seven? 7:47.